It's time to begin the school board meeting. Let me get some details out of the way. It's seven, well, it's about 7:04 Tuesday, July 10th, 2018. We're in the Sierra Room of the Community Center. It's the time, date, and place for the regularly scheduled school board meeting of the Carson City School District. And we'll begin with Agenda Item 1, which is the flag salute. Laurel?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda Item 2 is adoption of the agenda. Ryan?
I want to, I move to postpone or defer Items 7 and 8 to another meeting because I haven't had a chance to meet with Mr. Stokes yet about it, and I have some real questions on those that I'd rather not cover in the meeting. And I think there's some issues with both items. So, I don't think this is a time-critical issue, so I don't see why it wouldn't be a big deal. Wait two more weeks.
So you're requesting to have that just removed from the agenda, tonight's agenda?
Correct.
That means...
Deferred to the next meeting.
Just a question because it is for discussion only. Can we, because we can't take any action, so we could discuss it, and then your concerns could be addressed before we have the second reading?
Because we deferred it from last meeting to this meeting already.
Yeah, it was, well, it was pulled from the last meeting for, I think, to review other procedures internally. I don't mind. It's going to slow the meeting way down with what I got, though. So I'm just letting you guys know. And if you want to sit here for an hour, we can do that. But I'd rather just chat with him because just how life happens, I didn't have a chance to catch up with him.
President Swirzik, is there a second to trustee Green's motion? Okay, was there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, now we discuss. Okay, and trustee Green is...
Oh, sorry, did you have something more?
Yeah, just requesting it to be removed until he has an opportunity to talk to the superintendent.
So I'm, is it time-critical? Or I don't have a problem with it as long as it's not time-critical?
It's not time-critical.
Okay.
We were hoping that we might be able to address the topic prior to school starting.
And how long is the next meeting that we have? Would it add time to that meeting? Was it already a long meeting for next time? And we're just adding to this will make it go to midnight? That's kind of my question. It's just how much time is...
I guess that depends on how long we talk. But I don't think any more than what we have listed here, 15 minutes per each item.
Okay, I'm not worried about the time, but if there's a concern by a fellow trustee that is making that request...
And Ann, are you able to be at the next meeting since this was your item? So actually, we'd go to the first meeting in August.
For discussion.
For discussion. And then it would be the second meeting in August, and school would have already started.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've discussed, and we, before we take action on the motion, then we'll ask if there's any concerns from the audience or the public on the agenda. Okay, seen none. We'll now vote on the original motion. And we'll, Renee, just call the roll.
Can I add something real quick, though? Even if it did get delayed, state law already covers this, too. This won't affect, it won't change any operations anyway.
And then if it goes to the August meetings, are you here in the August meetings? Okay.
Point of, point of work, so are we voting on adopting the agenda?
As submitted.
Yes.
There was a second.
Yeah, yeah, Joe and mine.
That's why we have the discussion. There was a second. Okay, so let's...
So I made the motion, so I'll withdraw my motion.
I guess my question is, I'm not sure why we couldn't have this discussion item while we have Ann here, since she's not going to be here. I mean, honestly, I mean, I don't know, is...
Like Laurel said.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with having the discussion. I mean, I don't know what your questions are. I'm just, if we're not taking action, I don't see why, why we can't do this.
And I guess if there's more in-depth questioning that you have, and rather than spend an hour, maybe those are questions that you could keep track of before the next meeting and then maybe get those answered. I don't know.
I move to remove Items 7 and 8 from the agenda for tonight. And not, and just to postpone them till another meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Any concerns from the audience, public input? You want to come up and get your, get on the record?
Mr. President, I am Gene Green, and I'm, I have several comments in looking at this stuff. And I didn't even see the draft until today. And I would very much like some time so that I, I personally would like to talk with Mr. Stokes also about it, because I also have some proposals I would like to make, and those things that could be added to the draft, maybe, or the draft could be changed before the next meeting. That's what I would like to do as a, as a member of the public.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. And just all in favor, aye. Propose? Okay, so, motion carries 42. We'll remove it and put it on next meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, for the record. Richard Stokes. Back in the spring, as we knew that Dr. Perdare would be retiring and leaving the school district, we began talking as a management team as to the impact his leaving would have on the district, taking into account the good things that have occurred within the last five years, especially as it applies to our learner-centered model. We had paid close attention to our secondary schools and the good things that were happening there, the positive steps that were being taken, the training that our principals had received as a result of our race to the top program. And we felt strongly about moving this same thinking and this same philosophy into our elementary schools. And so we began working on some thinking that would apply to taking those learner-centered concepts and ingraining them to a deeper level at the elementary schools. Ultimately, we had a goal of having all of our elementaries achieve either a four- or a five-star rating per the state's ranking systems for schools. And we developed a job title, and we came up with a position that probably has the longest title in the world. But we think it accurately describes what we're trying to accomplish within our school district. So we went through a process of advertising this position. We had some very highly qualified candidates. We settled to interview four individuals. And in the end, we selected Mr. Chad Hicks to serve in this role as a supervisor essentially for our elementary schools. And I'd like to invite Mr. Hicks to come forward so I could introduce him to a greater level. Mr. Hicks, first and foremost, is a teacher and has a significant history as a teacher. Come right up here, sir. And in addition, he has served as dean of students. He's been an assistant principal, a principal. And in Washoe County, where Mr. Hicks has served, I think all of your, your...
Twenty-two years.
Experience, actually became a turnaround principal for two years, where he took Echo Loader, one of the lowest-performing schools in the Washoe County, made that, that school able to achieve adequate yearly progress for the first time in its career. And so with that, he was also served as area superintendent and was actually the recipient of the 2014 Freedom Award, which is a high civilian honor. And so we were very impressed with Mr. Hicks, happy to have found him applying for this important position in our school district. And it's my purpose here this evening to introduce him to you tonight, allow him to speak a little bit on his own behalf, and certainly for you folks to ask questions and get to know him a little bit. But this is Mr. Chad Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. President, members of the Board, I thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm extremely excited to be here, working for the Carson City School District. I've worked in Washoe County for 22 years, and I, past 16 years, I've led reform efforts. I worked as a principal in three different schools. Glenn Duncan Elementary School was my first assignment, and that school was the lowest-performing school in the district, most impacted school in the district. And we actually made high achieving status within a two-year period. So it's not me, it's the team that I've worked with. I've been fortunate enough to work with tremendous individuals and over the years, and great staffs. And so I was a principal at three different schools, participated, as Mr. Stokes said, in the University of Virginia Darden Turnaround Program. At the time, Echo Loader Elementary School was the lowest-performing school in the district, and I was selected as the turnaround principal. They're performing at single-digit proficiency levels. We met all of our growth targets there. I served as the Title I Coordinator for the school district. All of my years, even as an area superintendent, I worked with the disadvantaged schools and all the title schools. So I'm very well versed in, in title grants. And my experience has always been school reform. And I think the most important thing is really not just student success, but really teaching, helping our students become confident learners, because the bar is high right now, and the tests are harder than ever. And working with my team and working with individuals to, to strategize and what you guys are doing right now in Carson City with your learning guides and your measurable instructional units and all the work that Mr. Perdare has done. It's all about building that confidence, and when students fail, it's about helping them get back on their feet and being successful the next time. So, I'm a proud father of four, four children. It's really hard tracking down teenagers. I was going to have them come here and be here tonight, but I tell you, it's probably harder than school reform on their break. And, but I can tell you, Carson City has a tremendous reputation from the outside perspective, and I've seen that the last couple of days. Mr. Stokes and his staff has been very welcoming, and I'm just very proud to be part of this community.
Well, Mr. Hicks, welcome, first of all, first of all. Are there any comments or questions of the Board? And certainly I do. You know, this position, when we talk about the learner-centered model or the learner-centered, you know, approach to education, and you brought up one of the links, and that's the learning guides. And it's the one thing, in addition to all the other data gathering and, you know, all the things that go along with this, the learning guides are the one thing that brings teachers, students, and parents together, if applied by the teachers, if used by the teachers. This is, when you talk out the three-week increments and learning periods, you talk about targeted goals, essential questions, and assessments. I mean, your description is right here. This is a time, if used, we don't have to go to support teams because the kids are brought along, they're engaged, there's a partnership formed between the teacher and the students. But in any event, if they're not, then there's a support team in place to get these kids, and hopefully, there's no kid that's going to fail. And like you said, it's going to be success, but in addition, it's confidence. We have the tools, and I'm just, you know, given what you just said and what Mr. So said, you know, I'm, it's hooray for us that you've chosen to come here, because I think with a team and the good people are already in place, you can now, with your experience, lead the way for the benefit of all these kids in the district. So I'm, I'm just excited you're here. And I'll be talking to you throughout, you know...
I look forward to it. Thank you. I feel like the luckiest person around. This is something that we've tried to accomplish many times, and the work that's gone into this is just unbelievable. But whenever you involve a student in the process, that's the, that's what's left out of.
Yeah.
That it's going to be successful.
Yes. So, any other questions? Go.
Well, first of all, welcome aboard. And I think change is always exciting, and new perspectives are important. One of the struggles we have in student success is, you know, it affects everybody. It's important for these kids to succeed. It's important, I think, the race to the top work we did really was very valuable, and all the stuff we're doing is, you know, it's important, but what we're finding is there's a certain level of fatigue that goes with it at the staff level. And it impacts not just the teachers, but administration and everybody. And really, what I'm hoping for is, as we move forward, is we're really paying attention regarding what works and maybe what isn't working so well, and finding a way to kind of weed out the stuff that isn't as effective as the other stuff. So we're really getting our folks and our students to focus on, you know, what's really working the best, what's most effective for these students. And I'm hoping with your experience and your perspective, you know, we can kind of go down that road and, you know, and really, you know, let these administrators and teachers know and feel that, okay, you know, what we're asking of you is really the stuff that works the best. And I'm, and I'm kind of hoping, you know, that's in line with your thinking.
Absolutely. The way the system is designed with the PLCs and the district PLCs, and it's, it's interesting because in order to be successful, you have to address concerns immediately. You don't ever let them fester, so to speak. And that is something, the way the system right now is set up, and I'm a big sponge right now, I'm learning it right now, but it's very in line with everything that we've done. We just haven't ever taken it to this level. But you have to involve everyone in the process. And if you can, I call them checkpoints in the past. I've found on staffs, the quicker I could address concerns, the quicker I could answer questions, that initiative will move forward. And so all the pieces are there. The groundwork's been built, and then elementary schools, that's the foundation for everything. I think there's going to be some impactful learning and some great success this next year and the years to come. So I'm extremely excited, but it's, it's everyone involved. So that's the part of the formula.
Another question, because, well, Mr. Hicks, while you're here, I think we have Lupe Ramirez in the audience. Lupe, would you stand? This, you'll be talking to her because she is our trustee-elect. In fact, she's taking my, my position here. But she's at WNC and very involved with what you're talking about. So you might get to know one another right away, so, okay? Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you so much.
That's the end of my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Ryan?
No, I just, my daughter's attending a basketball camp this weekend. I wanted to recognize and point out to you guys, and we all know we have great people, and this isn't even part of the school district, but it's just one more example of how good our employees are. Virtually every member of the coaching group in the camp, and Mrs. Golick is helping to administer stuff. I mean, it's, it's just really fun to even do a non-school activity, but yet see all the same players that we see all the time. So I just wanted to put it out there on the record that I'm proud of all of our, our folks that, they're, they're just active in every part of the community, outside of schools, too.
Laurel? Just a reminder for the NASB nominations, because August 15th is going to be here really quickly. And, like, let's just make sure we submit something.
No, I guess just a reminder, school isn't starting yet, but for graduating seniors, anyone who's listening, scholarship applications are starting now. So for those of you that are looking towards college, it's not too soon to start paying attention to that.
Stacy?
Just an update, we had our teleconference call. And we have another one coming up August 6th.
Who's "we"?
NASB.
NASB.
With the executive and the Board of Directors. And in that, we have to be coming up with the requirements that we want to see for our new executive director, because Dottie's retiring. So if anybody has anything to put in there, let us know, because we are, by the 20th, we're putting together what we, our expectations and stuff, and I've been working. We've never had an actual evaluation form for Dottie. So I've been working on that on top of this, too. So if you have any recommendations for that, too, because I want to send out a survey this year so that we have something to do. And then the other thing was, we didn't get anybody in for the appointment to the, I'm trying to find exactly what it's called, but educational standards that Dottie sent out in another email. So, and that's something you had talked about that you might be interested in. So I wanted to let you know that that is coming up. It's the Education Committee Commission of the States. And so we need applications for that, the people want to be appointed to that, that we can send to the governor. So, Mike, if you're interested...
I'll talk to you about it.
Yes, and then you'll have to sign off on it, but just to let you know that that deadline's coming up, too. So, and that's it.
Okay, Laurel, I'll just address your concerns about the NASB nominations. The process is underway. I didn't hear from anyone during the week, except Stacy. And Richard and myself, we're gathering, you know, just information, and, but the process individually is going on, so I'll have some information for the Board. And, Mike, you've got some?
For the record, I talked to you about it last week.
I got 12 out of 16 nominations.
I'm just being the reminder and stuff, because I know it ends up being on the 14th. We're, we're trying to fax the applications in, so...
Thank you. Yeah, we got it. Okay. Association reports? Seen none. Agenda Item Number 6, public comment. Anyone in the, in the public that wishes to make a comment for anything that is not on the agenda, please just come forward at this time. And seen none?
Page 1 to Agenda Item Number 9. Informational update on the English, is it second language, ESL or...
ESL. Let me start again. Informational update on the English as a second language program in the Carson City School District, for discussion only. Dr. Laura Austin.
Good evening, President Swirzik. I'm here with the Board, Superintendent Stokes, and District Leadership, for the record. My name is Laura Austin. I'm Title III English Learner Program Director, for the district, and I appreciate this opportunity that you've given me this evening to provide you an update for the English Learner Program. I'd like to mention that there is data that's been provided in your packet that supports the information in my presentation this evening. In the interest of time, I won't be addressing each page of that packet, but I welcome your questions during or after my presentation regarding any aspect of the data that, that I present to you. Also, you do have a copy of the PowerPoint. I apologize for doing a PowerPoint, but I have a lot of information this evening. If you will forgive me in advance, I'd like to warn you, some of it's pretty mundane, but I do want to give you and the public some background information about the day-to-day of the English Learner Program and some nuts and bolts of the laws, regulations, et cetera, that guide our work. So I'm going to cover four areas. Let me actually get my notes. I needed the 30 minutes that Ann had so that I could prepare myself. No, just kidding. Yeah, really. The show must go on. So, there are four areas to my presentation tonight. Laws and regulations for the education of English learners, sources of funding, assessment and instruction highlights, and demographic and achievement data. First of all, a definition. English learners are defined as students for whom another language other than English is spoken in the home, as identified by the Home Language Survey, which is part of the registration on Infinite Campus. And, the word "and" there, underlined, is significant. The student has demonstrated that he or she is not yet proficient in English based on a state-approved English language screening test. This definition probably seems like it's a no-brainer. However, it, believe it or not, it is a huge part of my work in making sure that we don't over-identify English learners nor under-identify them. That second asterisk there, for example, students are not to be determined, the home language or EL status is not to be determined based on observational data, such as surname, ethnicity, or language is spoken. We do need to follow the, the regulations in that, as stated in that first section. We have some legislation and legal guidance for educating English learners. It's pretty historic, actually. And you do have a packet in your, in your, excuse me, well, a mini-packet in your larger packet that really does a nice job of summarizing the legalities and the legislation. And I really urge you to read through it. It's, it's very user-friendly. But federal law has established the rights of linguistically diverse students and the responsibilities of the educational system. And I'd like to point out two keystone cases, Law, decisions, Laul versus Nichols in 1974, and Castaneda versus Picard in 1981, if you'd allow me just to take a little deeper dive there. In Laul versus Nichols, it was established that school districts do have a requirement to teach English to students for whom there is not yet fluency in English. Sink or swim, or what we call English immersion, is not sufficient. And then Castaneda versus Picard took it even deeper and said that there's a three-pronged litmus test for school districts in that we have to use research-based curriculum for English learners in educating them in, in English and in their content area. We also have to establish measures to see how successful and effective the instruction is. And if the instructions, this is the third prong, is not effective, then we need to make adjustments. And I really dwell on those two, because everything else I'm going to speak to this evening really is guided by these two... We also have to establish measures to see how successful and effective the instruction is. And if the instructions, this is the third prong, is not effective, then we need to make adjustments. And I really dwell on those two, because everything else I'm going to speak to this evening really is guided by these two cases. We have federal law under ESSA, which of course is the newest version of the Elementary-Secondary Education Act. Within ESSA, we have Title I, and under Title I is the Title III section, which is specific to English learner education. In fact, one of my roles is Title III Director for the district, and I report to the Nevada Department of Ed, Title III Department. Department of Justice, Dear Colleague Letter, and Federal Tool Kit are also in your packet. They certainly guide our work. And then, of course, we have our own Nevada code and our school board policy and Regulation Number 219. Under ESSA, you'll see in that they take a deeper look at some subgroups of English learners, some of which are students with disabilities, and recently arrived English learners, also known as newcomers, and sometimes known as immigrants, depending on if they've come from another country or not. And they also, ESSA does require us to continue to monitor the work, the achievement of former English learners, those who have exited our instructional program. English learners who are also students with disabilities, in your packet, you'll see we have some data on the numbers there and percent of special ed students that are represented by the English learner population. I really just want to point out here, this limited English proficiency, under IDEA, a child cannot be determined eligible for special education services if the determinant factor is language difference. On the other hand, and there's always another hand, on the other hand, a student can't be under-identified because of language difference. In other words, we couldn't hesitate to evaluate a student for a disability simply because they are not fluent in English. And that's, again, a continuing discussion that we have in the school district, and it's a good one. We have categorical funding for English learners. I think I've mentioned to you, to this group at this meeting before, that that's a fairly new thing. Throughout the 80s, 90s, that was not the case. But we do have per pupil Title III funding, and that's federal. We also have federal immigrant funding that's based on growth. So some years we get that funding, some years we don't. And the criteria or definition for immigrant for this funding is a student born in a country other than the U.S. and has been in U.S. schools less than three years. And in your packet, you'll see a map that we were able to pull up for you from our elevation software, showing most of the countries that our students hail from. SB 390, Senate Bill 390, is state funding. It's per pupil EL funding that we currently receive. And then a newer funding source is SB 178, also per pupil funding for English learner and poverty. So that's a little different funding. I would like to point out here at the top, these funds are to supplement educational funding that is provided for all students. And English learners, of course, still benefit from the general education funding. The purpose of Title III, just in general, is to help ensure that English learners, including immigrant children and youth, attain English language proficiency and achieve to the same high standards that all students are expected to meet. So let's turn now to our district and some specifics. You'll see the home languages for our students in 1718. Ninety-six percent of our students who indicated another language on their home language survey other than English and were determined to still need English instruction, ninety-six percent of their homes were from, they were from Spanish-speaking homes. And then we had 1% or less of Vietnamese, Tagalog, Punjabi, and Hindi. But you'll see in your packet that we are also represented by other languages in our district also. And you'll see our numbers. We had a total of 1,203 English learners, approximately 16% of our students last year were in the English learner program. And you can see we, I just grouped them there by grade level cluster. That happens to be how they also test on the ACCESS test, so it was easy data for me to pull. And you'll notice that we have 17 students who take the Alternate Access Test, which is for English learners. It's their annual state test to test their language proficiency, and they are significantly cognitively impaired. And they are in grades one through 12. So that's a total of 1,203 students last year. So moving on to assessing students, it's required, as you know, that all English learners take an annual English language proficiency assessment. We call it the ELPA in general. And then each state needs to adopt an ELPA test. And our state has adopted the ACCESS 2.0, which is part of the WEDA consortium. We are one of 38 states, which makes it nice. If students travel the country, sometimes we get students with WEDA scores, which is, which makes it nice for them when they enter our program. The test is given annually, and it's an online test administration, grades one through 12. It takes about four days, approximately six hours per student. It is a very rigorous language proficiency test, which is required by ESSA and our state laws. It gives us six measures, or a six-point measure, I should say. Level one, the lowest, is entering, all the way up to level six reaching. And at this point, they've changed the exit criteria. I think you're familiar with that already. It used to be a five, and now exit is a 4.5 overall. That's how the ACCESS 2.0 works. The state Nevada Department of Ed has given us some further benchmarks regarding those test scores. So sufficient growth is still considered to be .5. So if I was a 2.3 in second grade, I would hope to be at least a 2.8 in third grade. And that's considered sufficient growth, the idea being that students can exit in six years or less. Exit, like as I just mentioned, is a composite of 4.5. And just recently, just instituted last year, there's now an alternate pathway to exit. So if a student gets a 4.0 to 4.4 overall, and their academic achievement data is at grade level, then they can be considered, looking at the whole picture, attendance, parent permission, teacher recommendation, they can be considered for exit. And those achievement measures are the MAP, SPAC, and End of Course targets, along with other district benchmarks. So here's our exit rates for 2018. The test is given every January to March, so, and then the results come in in May. So we do already know this year, which students exited this year and will no longer be in the program next year, and will be monitored. I've put it here for you by school. And the second number, of course, for example, Boarderwick-Bray, the 75, is how many English learners at Boarderwick-Bray. And then the first number is how many exited. And then there's the percent of exit. And you'll see that the district average was 14.8, which is about the same as the state average over the last several years. So that's a good thing, in my opinion. But 14.8% exit. So then you can look at our, by school, and you can see, I think, a helpful measure for me is which schools met the district average, which schools are above the district average, and which schools are below. And you'll see that, hats off to Empire Elementary, they had amazingly admirable exit rate at 20%. We would love to have a district average of 20%. That's very admirable. And then you'll see that most schools surpassed the district averages, and some did not.
So looking at this compared to 2016-17, did our exit percentages go up, or did they go down?
It's interesting, because they stayed exactly the same. And I do have a slide at the end. You could flip to on your page there, but I will discuss that. We had a 14.8% exit rate last year. And then with the alternate exit, pathway to exit, we raised that by 3% more. So we were at 17.8%. Now before, how should I say this? At the beginning of the year, we were still operating under the five as an exit, and our exit rate went down to 2%, as did Clark Counties, as did Washoe Counties. It was pretty astonishing, actually. And so I think there was some consternation, certainly not at my level, but at levels above mine. And that's when they changed the exit rate to 4.5, and we found ourselves back to where we would normally see a respectable exit rate at 14 or higher. Now, the year before, we had been at 24.9%, a 25% exit rate, and we were just thrilled. And then WEDA, for whatever reason, decided to re-scale, not re-score, because the scores stayed the same, but re-scale their exit criteria, their one-through-six measures. So what became, what used to be a five became a four, and then our exit rate plummeted to that 2%. So we had an adjustment year last year, and I think this year, I really feel like we're back on track again, and we're on our way. I think the state has also found its way a little bit. What the state also did, I should mention, is they took off the literacy measure. There used to be two measures. It was composite of five and a combination of reading and writing a five. They took off that second measure. It's still measured. It's still there in the report, but it's not an exit criteria. So.
Dr. Austin?
Yeah.
Of the students that exit, is there, do we have a certain percentage that, or do we have one at all that fall back into that need?
Well, we'll talk about monitoring. I don't have that data for you right now. What we find overall, and this is, of course, by high school, so not in the year-to-year, is if students exit, they do very well in high school. We just find that the exited students, for the most part, they are on their way. And one of those reasons is because it is a rigorous exit criteria. So, but the other is because we monitor, and the other is because we have an excellent learner-centered model. So it's, I think it's all coming together. In fact, we had 30 12th graders in the English learner program at Carson High this past year, and I checked on their graduation rate, and it was 100%. And I'm like, no, 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 no. That's, they're English learners. They're not exited yet. So I required Carla, my wonderful assistant, to print their transcripts, because I had to see it for myself. And yes, each one of them earned all of their credits. So even within the English learner program, our schools are really providing those students the instructional supports they need to take on the content. And I know some of that with End of Course changing and all that, that we're going to have new challenges there. But for this year, it was, it was very good So here, I'm going to take a little deeper dive, and I do apologize, this is small, but it is in your packet. It's page 10. As you'll recall, in our legislation, our case law, whatever you want to call it, with Picard and Castaneda, we have to ascertain are students learning at the same high level as their English-only peers? And how do we know that? We have to measure it. And if it's not happening, then we have to make adjustments. So just recently, the last two years, again, with improved, and I would say my improved skillset, certainly, but improved data collection, we are able now to make some connections. This is a report that I had to provide to Nevada Department of Ed for our SB 390 grant, and so I thought to share it with you. It is an EL, English learner assessment results, average scores and percentage growth for English language acquisition, which is the ELPA, and side-by-side with academic achievement, either the SPAC or End of Course. And then over here, we got our itty-bitties, because they, they're part of my SB 390 grant. So we have some pre-K data over here. But I wanted to show you that, I'm going to cut to the chase right off the bat and then back up. We are showing growth, and in most cases, very strong growth, in the area of language acquisition. In other words, ELPA testing from one year to the next. So what this section measures is you'll see by grade level, and I'm just going to use first grade as an example. And I'm going to start with 2018, which was the most recent ELPA ACCESS 2.0 testing. The average for that cohort, if you consider first grade a cohort, the average overall score was a 3.5. And of course, we want 4.5 because that's our exit. Last year, when that group was in kindergarten, so that was 2017, their average ELPA score was 2.3. So same group of kids. Now, of course, it's not identical, because kids come and go. But it is pretty much the same group of kids. We have total here, grades one through, grades, I guess, one through 12, we have 900 students who took the test both years. So we're looking at those two years for the same kids. So you can see that there was 52% growth in the average ELPA score for this year's first grade from when they were in kinder. And then you can just go down and do the same thing for second grade. Average for our second graders this year was 3.6. Last year, as first graders, their average was 3.2, and that's a 13% increase. Then we get up into, like here, our fourth grade, my word, the average is a 4.3 this year. They're almost to exit. The average is almost an exit score. And last year, as third graders, that same group, their average was 3.5, which is a 23% growth in language acquisition scores for that group. We do have one group that went down. And I'd like to point out, as much as I'm proud of when we show growth, I do have to remind myself that we're on a four-point scale. So any little blip on the screen is going to show up as even a two-digit percentage drop or increase. So I have to temper my enthusiasm, but then I also get to temper my disappointment. But you will see that sixth grade did have a lowering, a lowering. So that's the ELPA side. Are there any questions about that, how that's set up with the students' years? Then the SPAC, we have math here and reading to the right. This is set up differently. And this is because it's what I'm asked to present, or to provide, I should say, to Nevada Department of Ed. They want to look at, by grade level, how did English learners do in SPAC math? Now, the two years that we have are 1516 and 1617. So that was a ways, a while back. But if you look at, again, third grade, the first year that takes SPAC, their 1516 average in third grade was 2.3. Then we look at 1617. This is also third grade, so it's a different group of students. But it's the same grade level. And I would just suggest here that this is a good opportunity for us to look at instruction and assessment and curriculum. So how is third grade doing for English learners? And how are English learners doing in third grade? Well, one year, their average was 2.3, and last year, it was 1.6, excuse me, 1.8. It'll be interesting to see, we don't have this year's results. So do we, do we start to edge back up? Or do we plateau? Or do we go further down? And this, I think, informs our instruction. And as I said, our implementation of the curriculum. So you'll see here, percent growth, you'll see for both math and reading, right now, you'll see there's some negatives. So for a reason that I have not ascertained, our grade-level percentages, our grade-level average score, I should say, not percentage, our grade-level average score for almost every grade level went down between the two academic years.
But I mean, we also, are you accounting for the fact that it's a different group of kids? So, I mean.
That's why I say it would inform our instruction and assessment. It would not, it really, and again, only if, I think that third year is going to be very telling. Yes.
And I only point that out because it's so easy to kind of pigeonhole our schools. And it's, it's a whole different group of kids with a whole different set of concerns. And so I think if you wanted to track it, and you really kind of look for efficacy, you could look at third to fourth to fifth, and then kind of track the progress that way, as opposed to just third.
Correct. But I don't think we should overlook that we do need to look at curriculum and assessment by grade level, too, and its appropriateness for English learners. Certainly not any kind of broader, you know, is it working? But for English learners, there's that, you know, Castaneda and Picard, is it working? And if not, where do we adjust for third graders? If we had five years of third grade, just, they just never grow, then maybe there's a piece missing. Maybe there's a piece missing from the English learner department. You know, it's information for myself, too, certainly. Absolutely. It's certainly not just a focus on the classroom. Absolutely. So that's, that's this table here. And then you'll see our itty-bitties. I just have to point out, these itty-bitties over here, they take a pre and a post brigance as part of our pre-K grant. And there were 57 English learners in pre-K last year out of 140 students. The average brigance, which is a verbal test, was 14.7 at the beginning of the year, and the average at the end of the year was 29.8 for 102% growth. So if anybody wants to get some positive reinforcement, spend time in a pre-K classroom, because they're little One way that we do use the access scores is for individual language education plans. And I do want to show you that we are looking at the students who are not making the .5 growth. And for this year, we had 432 students out of the 1,203 did not show sufficient growth. So that's about a third of our students will have individual language education plans. Of course, we would like to see that, definitely like to see that percentage go How else do we use the access data? We use it to design services for the students, their instructional services. And services used to be pull-out, 100% pull-out, back in the day. And now, it's mostly in the class. And now, it's mostly in the classroom because we have TESL and HQSI-trained teachers. And then our ESL staff supplements that either with in-class support, co-teach support, and some pull-out for, certainly for our newcomers and for students who need extra time with the language development. We also are experimenting with a newcomer block schedule at one of the elementary, excuse me, at one of the middle schools at Eagle Valley next year. We're really excited about that. Services, and by services, I mean instructional services, instructional models. Is it pull-out? Is it push-in? Is it co-teach? Is it homeroom with a TESL-endorsed teacher? Is it content area with an HQSI-trained teacher? All those services are entered into Elevation, which is our software platform. And then I can correlate that loosely, of course, with their other achievement measures. And we can start to see patterns in services. So, maybe there's a service that's working better, a service model that works better than others. Monitoring, exited students are monitored for four years. And we do that electronically. We ask of the classroom teachers in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies to fill out a very brief survey regarding the student's progress in the classroom. Right now, we have, gosh, I want to say, four-hundred students who are being monitored. So, that's a lot of teachers giving us feedback. And we do look at every form, and from that, we plan interventions. Sometimes it's attendance, sometimes it's behavior, sometimes it's needed instructional services. And so, the ESL teacher works with the school staff to, to figure that out. But these are all things that are required of us. And I have to say, I think our district does a really good job of just digging in and getting the job done. And we're, we're really not leaving too much up to chance for these kids anymore. We also have supplemental programming that's paid for out of that categorical funding, before and after-school programs, summer school, summer school tuition, and then targeted EL curriculum. We have a special oral language curriculum with Rosetta Stone. We have a special reading curriculum for middle school, for example. And then here are some things that we're trying, again, going back to our legislation. We always need to be looking ahead at how we can improve. We have professional learning for all of our staff. On all the PD days, there's always English learner focus for the, for some groups. And then we have elevation strategies for classroom teachers. So, now they can get online at a drop of a hat and get their, their, find out who their English learners are in their classroom and get best strategies specific to their subject area for those students. It's a really pretty awesome platform. And then we have instructional interventions, including a very well, how should I say, talented paraprofessional staff and some of those things I've already mentioned. And the last I'd like to mention on this slide is that we have the Nevada State Seal of Bili literacy, which is really modeling for our students the value of being bilingual. And we're encouraging more and more students to take advantage of the Heritage Language Advanced coursework that is being offered at the high school. We have middle school and high school parent liaisons that provide English learner parent programming, and they do an amazing job. This year, we're, we have the wonderful Dr. Tanya Carone, who's joining my department as a teacher on special assignment. And she will be giving site-specific customized support for staff working with the principals and the teachers so that it's, it's, how should I say this? It's not just learner-centered, but it's teacher-centered. It's something they've asked for in terms of giving them support for teaching their English learners. And then we're starting an English learner program advisory. And I would like to invite all board members to come. I will publish those meeting dates. It, it would be extremely helpful. We're forming a broad-based collaboration of all stakeholders to really look at every aspect of the program over a nine-month period and then make recommendations to the district on any next steps that we should be taking. And then I also, along with some other EL staff members from the district, participate in the WNC Latino Parent Advisory that is facilitated by Lupe Ramirez. And I'm really excited about the connections that we're making there with our, our, our community parents. And lastly, I just want to, again, direct you to your packet. These are the, you have it in your index also. But these are some of the facts, the data points that I've collected for you. And I will, I just want to reiterate that these are the data points we have to be looking at because they measure whether or not the students are being successful in the general education curriculum and to what extent they are. And this is the slide that Stacy, I was referring to, where you can see all the last five years. Two thousand and fourteen, our exit rate was eight percent. So, we've, we're, we've strengthened our program. There's just no doubt. And that's, for English learners, it's, it's embedded and integrated throughout the curriculum. I would also like to give a shout-out to our wonderful English learner staff, our teachers. I did not mention the Paris here, but I do have a fandango photograph. There you go. We had a recognition meeting slash training slash ceremony last spring at the Governor's Mansion. And there were just about fifty of us. And I always don't, I never want to say that in front of Mr. Fueling, but it's, it is all grant-funded for the most part, so. And in, in all seriousness, that is one thing that we have done with the grant funding, is provided more assistance to the students, the parents via the hiring of bilingual paraprofessionals. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Austin. Okay. There's a lot of kids that need help, is what you're saying. So, we've got an English learner program. Take me through a typical day in an elementary school. What is, what happens?
That's a great question. Well, what has happened is services have been formulated that the schools then follow. And so, at the elementary level, an English learner's day could, on the outside, look just like anybody else's day in that the homeroom teacher is TESL-endorsed. And perhaps the English learner goes to a reading class that is taught by the ESL teacher, perhaps. But perhaps not. But what is happening within that? And then perhaps, a bilingual paraprofessional comes to work with that classroom. And I do want to emphasize that paraprofessionals can help anybody in the classroom, right? So, they're really another set of hands and, for the classroom teacher. But what's really happened, it has happened before that, in that the classroom teacher has differentiated their instruction or planned for or accommodated for that student's instruction and assessment. So, that's where you might see some subtle differences. You might see a fifth grader taking a science test and has a bilingual dictionary. That's actually very intentional, believe it or not. We have, you know, ascertained who can use a dictionary on the classroom assessments, and that dictionary is assigned to them, and they've been taught how to use it. So, it, it looks, the other thing that could happen is you would see at some point in the day where maybe every fifth-grade class has two or three students who leave the room, go to the ESL teacher's classroom for a writing class. We find that writing, I've mentioned this before, is really a difficult content area for English learners. So, they might have a thirty-five to forty-five-minute lesson with the ESL teacher daily for writing. So, that's elementary. Middle and high school would look different.
Okay. Let's go back to the elementary. Now, the Read by Grade Three program, is, is it further complicated by this? Or is the same thing, does it apply? I, I'm trying to say...
That's a great question. They have individual language plans, and we have individual language education plans. So, they overlap. And, and it, whatever we do for English learners, and I always just, it sounds almost too simple, we have to show that it's working. So, we know through HQSI that there are, you know, eight components. There's thirty-two strategies that you need to build into your lesson unit, not every lesson, but your, your instructional unit so that content is comprehensible and assessment is fair and gives you the information you need. So, that can happen in any setting. I hate to be overly simple. However, we know that for some, some teachers don't have the proper credentialing. So, they, the students do need to go to the ESL teacher for a separate lesson. And then for some teachers, there's just so much differentiation you can do, and the student is struggling. So, again, extra support is needed. I think those things fall right into line with Read by Grade Three and certainly pre-K, starting, it really should be pre-K through third grade, that trajectory. I don't see any conflict where we just want, what we just want to be careful of is that if we take something out, if Read by Grade Three, we adjust how we provide elementary reading. So, the students don't, they all stay with the homeroom teacher now, for example. Let's say a school made that decision. The, and I've put this advisory out to the principals. They still have to make sure that the English learner is getting a daily English language acquisition level at their instructional level. The come-along-with-me, you know, work harder than everybody else, catch up with us, that is against regulations. So, Read by Grade Three, it does not conflict with the English learner program. But we do need to make sure that we are following what the English learner program requires, that we fold that in.
Questions?
You know, I just want to say, I think we're really fortunate because we have so many teachers that are TESL-certified in our schools. And then, you know, and I think that also the level of paraprofessionals we have. So, I mean, I think our students are well-served. And it's, and it's really those individuals that are really moving these kids. I can't think of one school in this district I worked in that I wouldn't, I wouldn't beg those paraprofessionals or ESL teachers to come work with me.
Exactly. When I, when I brought together the almost fifty staff members in April, it was, it was overwhelming, almost, to see so much talent in the room. So, I appreciate you saying that, Mike. But also, it has a lot to do with the structures we've put in place, Mastery Connect, the MIUs, the learning targets. English learners need to know where they're going or they're never going to get there. And if there's one thing we've done extremely well in this district is we have implemented a really clear curriculum path that I, I just think we can build on.
Yes, I just wanted to compliment you. I'm serving on the English Mastery Council for the state. And so, I'm on the District Policy Subcommittee, District Policy Subcommittee, basically. I'm trying to remember the other one, and it slipped my mind because it's something else with it, District Policy and something. Anyway, we reviewed the district policies for all the states in the district. And Carson City is, meets all the criteria. It's been updated with your help and the board's support to do that, to reflect the new criteria that the state has, has put forth for that. And it was used actually as an example at the NASB conference last November to show the other districts that yet, didn't yet have their district policy in compliance with what's required for English learners. And so, great job on that.
Well, thank you.
We also reviewed, this year, finishing up with English Mastery Council, reviewed the district plans for ELs. And some of the things that were noted, our, our TESL endorsement is much higher for teacher staff than in the state. And so, that, that shows our commitment to professional development. And one of the things that we did notice that's a trend throughout the state in reviewing the plans because we only looked at specific areas, but one of the areas we looked at was how many EL students are enrolled in GATE, Honors, or AP classes. And across the state, it's rather low. And that was concerning at the English Council Mastery level because we're wondering if there's something in the identification and assessment process that we're missing, that maybe we're not identifying the right number of ELs. Or how are we offering them? I do see in, on page nineteen in your data that you've given us, that you've got the number of students that have exited the EL program that are in those, which, when we reviewed the plan, we didn't have that for Carson City. Washoe County actually included it. And I think that was really helpful to see, to look and see, okay, this schools. And, and to be fair, a lot of districts in the state don't offer any GATE, Honors, or AP classes. Some of the rules just don't. But that's an area, I think, to, to be concerned with is, is to make sure that we're getting enough kids into those more advanced programs. And one of the suggestions from one of the council members in Clark County was to offer an AP Spanish test at the high school to improve the numbers of, of kids because it's something that they could excel in, and it's, it's their own language, which is probably what the Heritage Class is similar to. The other area that was concerning, and it's on page twenty in your packet, is the number of ELs that are identified with IEPs. And across the state, and Carson City's no different, we see higher number, higher percentages of IELs with IEPs in the secondary levels. And that is something to, again, look at our assessment, look at our identification to make sure that we're maybe not over-identifying. And that's, and maybe it's when they come to us, I'm not quite sure. But to have fourteen percent of the kids in K through twelve ELs with IEPs, but then to go to six through eight and thirty percent, it doubles. That, that's, that's concerning. And, and it's not just Carson City. It's, it's pretty much statewide where the secondary levels, there were just higher percentages of EL kids with IEPs. So, just a couple areas to, to look into deeper and maybe...
Yes.
See. And I don't know the answers other than that was what we reviewed and this is where we...
I do know, of course, our GATE advisory meets, and they're looking at identifying students. Even with that, it's, it's still been a low number for students who are in the English learner program. Again, once again, for our exits, they, they seem to start to fly. But we are looking at that as I know the GATE advisory is, is concerned about that. The other thing we found, and this might just be anecdotal because I had the same concern. Again, I, I printed off the transcripts for students who were identified as GATE in the secondary. And we found some students who were GATE but had not been enrolled in Honors or AP classes. And so, we're, that's just a point to look ahead to. Maybe the students declined. I don't, I have done zero research. It's just something that I was looking into this summer. So, that might be a systemic thing that we can, maybe in our guidance department, start to look toward. So, I, I think there's some, some opportunity there. With the special education, I, I don't have much involvement in that. But to say that we are, we have really system, systematically put in place procedures for having a TESL-endorsed teacher at those meetings, that has, it, it was kind of a rough system to put in place. It just kept falling off the cart. People kept forgetting. But we, I'd say the last year, two years, we've gotten better at that. So, that should help with that identification process, at least being stronger, you know, on your sure-footing. And then the other thing that we're really have put into place is the translation of the IEP for the parents and making sure an interpreter is provided who is strictly there to interpret. So, we're really trying to really clean up, so to speak, that IEP process for the multilingual family and for the English learner where we're trying to discern, is it language difference or is it a learning disability? Lot of pieces to that puzzle. But I, I just would like to give a shout-out to Support Services because they're always very giving with me. They, they listen and they try to implement everything that I, I ask for.
Just one more thing. With our English learner plan for Carson City that we reviewed, I noticed that some of the changes we made recently to the GATE identification were not updated in that. So, when we did review Carson City, I mentioned, it, it still had the old language that we, we assess them in second grade. And now, I know we, we can reassess them every year if, if, and there's other ways. So, that could be something to update to that plan.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments?
So, when we talk about home languages and the percentage is mostly Spanish, what about the other kids that have the Vietnamese and these other languages I've never even heard of? How do we do interpretation there?
Well, we're trying to, we try to, a couple things. We have TransPerfect, which is a remote, I may have mentioned that to you before, but it's a remote interpreting service. It's by phone. And so, every school is given a code. And any teacher, we pay a monthly, it's very reasonable. Every, every teacher has the code. It has been trained. Whether or not it's fresh in their memory, I'm not sure. We'll, of course, train again in the fall. But they can go to their phone in their classroom, as long as they can, can put it on speakerphone. And within about one minute or less, they'll have an interpreter on the phone who speaks that language. Now, for IEPs, then we go through Support Services. They go through the Language Center, usually at UNR, to have a real person in the room because remote is probably not the best way to do something like an IEP. And then what we also have done, and it's more anecdotal, but I, I'm hoping to systematize it more, is... it more, is, is refresh our list of staff in the district who speak other languages and so that they can be on call to be cultural brokers, so to speak, if, if we have a situation where we would like to have somebody speak with a family. Sometimes I identify those folks out in the community and then they help me with any kind of, you know, special circumstances we might have with a, a family that speaks another language other than Spanish. We aren't under any regulation requirement to provide the paraprofessional, the bilingual paraprofessional because the percentage is so low, but we all know that that's no way to operate when it comes to children. So we, we try to get it done in other ways.
Dr. Austin, you mentioned that the percentage of success and you mentioned Empire and Mark, Mark Twain is close by. What's happening there? What's, what's changed?
Well, I would say what's hap, well, from my perspective, one of the things that happened is we added an additional ESL teacher, we added an additional paraprofessional. So that's, of course, in my little micro world, we are providing resources at where they're needed with this grant funding. And then I would say that under the, the current leadership, they have a focus on instruction and they have a very, this is Empire, they have a very student-centered, positive take on what kids can do. It's a very asset-based approach to learning over there. And I, I have the privilege of observing classrooms. When a teacher completes the HQSI course, then I go in and I, as part of the course, I, I do a 15-minute observation. And I am always impressed with the instructional practices that I see at Empire. They are really implementing those HQSI strategies. I, I walked out of one observation asking if the teacher would do a presentation for my ESL teachers. That's how adept she was at, at working with her English learners. It's just, it's the teachers, like what else can I say? It's all about the teachers. Last thing I'll say about Empire, and I think I've said this before, so I apologize if I repeat myself, the parent involvement in Empire is amazing. And when we had our audit, not last school year that we just finished, but the year before, we had a parent panel speak. We had two representatives from Nevada Department of Ed meet with the Empire team. It included three parents and they all happened to be Spanish-speaking and they spoke in Spanish about how much they loved their school, how involved they were, how welcome they felt. It's huge. You just can't understate, or excuse me, overstate the importance of that parent feeling the buy-in of this, with the school. And they feel it at Empire. It's all, it's all good. They have the wonderful Miriam Torres there as a parent liaison and, but it, it comes from the highest level, from the leadership, and it flows through the, the staff and the community.
Questions, comments? Okay, well, Dr., thank you very much for what you've done and what you continue to do. It's impressive.
Well, I, I thank you for your time and we are continuing to work on getting those, the academic achievement to rise with the language acquisition. That's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Agenda Item Number 10, which is the discussion and possible action to use a portion of fiscal year 2018, 19 budgeted contingency funds to pay and maintain certain staffing and program, program costs for the Read by Grade Three, RBG3 program in the district during the school year due to the loss of funding from the RBG3 grant as authorized by NRS 354-598-005. This is for possible action. Mr. Soaks, Ms. Kima?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you know, right at the end of May, the school district was notified that we did not receive categorical funding for the Read by Grade Three program. This came as a shock, not only to us, but to you folks as well, knowing that in the first round of funding, we had put together a very successful reading program in our elementary schools. We immediately, immediately contacted Department of Education officials, seeking some answers. This is actually the third time that this particular agenda item has been in front of the board and that we have talked about it. And so for the last six weeks at least, my office and staff members have been working on this, communicating information to the Board of Trustees, meeting with Department of Education and State of Nevada officials in hopes of trying to appeal this condition. We have been told by the Department of Education that there is no appeal process. Consequently, we are continuing to push for answers as to some of the conditions that seem to be irregularities with regard to our, our program. Mr. Pavlakis has worked closely with us and has been advising us along the way as we are considering all aspects for relief in this particular situation. Now, I have a document here that the trustees have seen before. And this is a potential budget for putting into play the programs and funding that we lost at a, at a lower level. This is not the total amount that we asked for in our grant, but this is the amount that, after checking with our principals, came back to us as kind of a bottom-line condition to keep our Read by Grade Three, Grade Three programs at least viable at the, at the respective schools to the tune of approximately $325,000. We're at a place in this where we need some direction because there seems to be, from the Department of Ed and through the, the state of Nevada, additional categorical funding conditions. In other words, instead of school districts being given a per pupil amount that you can rely on year after year, there is funding that's made available that we have to apply for through grants. And that seems to be a process that creates winners and losers, even though we received a large amount in the initial Read by Grade Three grant. When the first round came out, here we are in this round where we received no funding. So in response to your questions, you asked whether or not it would be wise or, or even a consideration to go to our contingency fund as a way to maintain a portion of our Read by Grade Three program. Mr. Pavlakis and I and my team are continuing to work with the Department of Ed and with State of Nevada officials to see if there's a way that we can be made whole in this request. We know and recognize the importance of reading and maintaining the program that we've created that has proven successful. We also have to ask ourselves, is it a prudent thing for us to use contingency funds, which typically are set aside for extraordinary circumstances? And so that's a, a decision that we need to decide. Is this an extraordinary circumstance to consider using contingency fund for this purpose? And if so, will we continue to look towards the contingency fund if we have other grant programs for which we are not funded? This is not a great option for any of us, but it would be my recommendation in this situation that we not use the contingency fund to maintain a portion of our Read by Grade Three program, simply because it, it puts us in a place then, when other grants may not be funded, that we have to decide then, are we always going to turn to that contingency fund? Now I can also let you know that it's likely, as we've seen a pattern over the last several years of this categorical funding, that in October, the State Department of Education does an accounting or a reconciliation of their budgets. And bills are paid and about that time, the, the Department of Ed knows how much money they have yet to work with and, and there is, there typically tends to be monies that have not been expended. And so if through the legal process and our continued petition of the Department of Ed and the State of Nevada folks, if we could gain access to some of that money, we certainly might be in a place where we could continue our Read by Grade Three program to a higher degree than if we went on a, at a more piecemeal approach. With that, I've got folks all around me who have additional information about the programs if you like or need additional information. Certainly this, this recommendation I'm making tonight has not come about lightly. Talking with Mr. Feeling, who guides us in matters of financial expertise, contingency funds are typically, like I mentioned earlier, used for extraordinary circumstances, like when we have a building that may, that floods or if there's some other damage that occurs that keeps our students in a building that is well-maintained and, and used for the purpose of education. So that's a, a tough job, I think, that we have to discuss and answer questions and determine which direction we want to go tonight from the Board of Trustees.
Okay, we'll, we'll open this up to the board here in just a minute, but you know, a, a building that floods, I know we can compare that to a kid who loses out the ability to read. Read by Grade Three is, is, is building the foundation for, for all of our kids. And if we, if that takes, well, no, I'll give you my, I think, yeah, I think contingency fund is, that is an emergency for me, to have these kids have resources available so that every kid succeeds. And, you know, we'll hear from Sue and Valerie, but we've got to have something in place for these kids that they're not going to lose out and we're not going to, we're not going to slip backwards for the sake of the kids. They don't get a second chance. And I don't like, you know, then we could say, well, they'll play catch-up. No. I, I think it's, it's important that we address this, this now and, and maybe there are some solutions. So I'm going to open this up to the board.
I guess I would just say, it seems to me these are supplemental services, so we're not cutting out reading from these kids at this point. Well, we're, it's, you know, I mean, in every school I worked in, in Carson City, we didn't have SFA tutors or, you know, in the elementary schools I worked at, we didn't have those after-school programs. So I mean, they're supplemental, it's not like we're totally cutting out their reading program. And I think that, I think that we need to think about that. It's not, we're not saying we're not teaching reading, it's just, we're not teaching, we're not supplementing that instruction to the level that we would all like, but if we don't have the funds, we have to start making those tough choices.
No, I understand what you're, what you're saying, but our learner center approach means that we have support teams and the support teams come from the paraprofessionals who work for these kids. You know, we're, we're, I think, we can use the term supplemental, but I think it's a critical need for these kids because all students don't learn at the same rate, in the same way. So that's just my opinion. Further discussion with the, with the board members?
I don't really have, I don't think, much new information to add. I mean, we, we've discussed this for quite a while. It's, it's, it's a disappointing place to be, obviously. I can't express enough my dissatisfaction with the state leading us down this path. I really think it's irresponsible on their part for a number of reasons that I won't go into detail on. I, I understand where Trustee Walker's coming from and I agree with him in that, you know, certain programs, certain procedures aren't going to be lost. I mean, we're, we're going to do what we can, but, but I know this is going to come on the backs of the teachers and the paraproses. We are now going to ask more of them. They're going to have to do more with less, which is kind of a continued theme of, seems to, of how the industry of education seems to progress year to year. And I know our executive staff or whatnot doesn't want that to happen, but they're, they're in the same situation we are. We're, you know, we're, we have a mandate that isn't funded, we have to meet it. And it's going to be a challenge to do so. I, I also understand and agree with, with our president in that contingency funds, we have to be careful with that. I mean, if we have an emergency, we need funds to take care of things. And how do you weigh the need to repair a building for education versus the need to educate our kids and get them to read at an early age? So I mean, it's, it's a challenge and I, and I think if I have to put one in front of the other, I have to lean towards the kids because we have to find a way to teach them, whether it's in a building or on a hay bale. You know, these kids have to be taught to read and do math and all these things that are important for their education. So I'm rambling, but I mean, this is kind of what's rolling through my head for those that are listening.
I'm a, probably similar to Mr. Cassiopeau, most, I, I want to pursue our legal options. I, I do think that's important to stand up for ourselves and demonstrate that maybe the process wasn't right. But I also look at, we, I'm, I would like to do both. I would like to fund these essential positions for, for a few reasons. First and foremost, these folks are teaching our children. And secondly, jobs. This is people that are being employed and, and working and living in this community. And I, I just can't, I remember during the recession, I had a bunch of coworkers get pink slips three years in a row and it took big pay cuts to keep people in jobs. I think if we have the money to keep these programs in place and keep people employed, I think we absolutely should do it, not only for the children, but for our people, our employees.
And I mean, and just to support Mr. Stokes' position, you know, when next month we get the next grant that isn't funded and we don't have the money to save those jobs, how do we balance it? I mean, and it's, I don't think anybody in this room is saying, I don't, I don't want these people to have jobs or I don't value what they're doing. Everybody in this room would stand on the same side of that issue, but the fact is, when it comes to grant funding, we could be in the same exact position next week, next month, and then we don't have these funds. And so how does he as an employer say, for this program, it was adequate to go into the red for, but not for your program? And I think that we're in a dangerous situation where as employers, we have to be able to support what we're doing and look at the precedent that we're setting.
Let me ask our legal counsel. Going forward, you know, given all the controversy, discrepancies, lack of information with the Department of Ed, and we've been at this now six weeks, have you got suggestions going And I say this, we have funding at issue for kids. You know, I'm, I'm not saying it's for administrators, but this is for direct support for kids to read. If the Department of Education has not given us the information as to why they made a decision, even though we had the, the highest score on the, on all the applications submitted, when I ask the legal question, is there legally a, a way that we might be made whole in this process? Where, and again, we're relating this contingency fund, do we have to use it tonight or is in a, in a timely manner? a timely manner? Would there be a way that we might get a more definitive answer from the Department of Education?
As recently as today, I've had telephone communication with the attorneys for the department. I wish I could tell you that that means that the department is going to be issuing a check. That's not the case. And I would not... I think I would be misleading the board if I were to tell you that I believe... Well, I do believe that there have been some errors and inconsistencies, inaccuracies, and a number of legal issues that surround the award or the lack of award that was made to the Carson City School District. I don't know... I can't tell the board that I believe that there's a strong possibility that pursuing remedy of those errors will result in funding and sufficient time to make use of the funds for the 2018-19 school year. I do believe that ultimately, the district has valid claims that should be successful. I'm hoping we don't have to pursue those claims. I'm hoping that reasonable minds will prevail. But if you want me to give you a timeframe on when that might turn into money, I'm sorry, I just can't.
Stacy.
I think one of the things is the timing of this. Is if we had done our budget, we'd done the tentative budget, we already had the budget. If we had known this was coming down the line, that would have been better. Because we've been very blessed on this board for the last couple of years that we've been flush and we've had money to keep programs. But I've been on the board when we weren't and it was in a recession and you had to look at cuts and the budget was really difficult back then. And we had to, you know, look at it. And that's how I look at this, is it was just really bad timing because had we known, we could have gone through the budget and looked at other programs so that we could fund this. Because there's a lot of counties that aren't being funded for the Read by Three. The whole time, ever since it's been mandated, the legislature has not given enough money to any of the counties to actually fulfill what they want done. So it's a bad timing issue, for one. But when we were in those bad things, that's how we got to be flush, is because we had to make the difficult decisions and we had to make cuts so that we could build up this ending fund balance that we've been having a luxury of having for the last eight, 10 years. So, you kind of have to look at it a broader sense, too, is a bigger sense, is this is hitting us now and had we known maybe during the budget cycle, we would have made different options of what we were going to fund. So, that's where I'm hesitant.
Sue, Valerie, give the board some assurances going forward with... If we don't use this contingency fund, that the kids... The kids are going to lose... How are we going to minimize the...
Valerie Dockry, for the record, I can give you some context to the budgets at those schools with other supplemental funding, if that would help you?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you look at the schools that are up here, for instance, Boarderwick Bray, they have a position up there for an interventionist. That is a vacant position. So, we would not... If we don't fill it, we are not laying someone off. They have at their school four SFA tutors, a parent involvement specialist, paid for out of their Title I money. They have an after-school program, paid for out of a 21st Century grant. So, they have a lot of services in place that have been used in... Have been braided with Read by Three to provide services. So, if we were to not fill that position, they are still going to be able to provide many supplemental services for their students within that context. When you look at Empire, we took that off the list because they got their interventionist through another grant. They also have SFA tutors in their Title I grant, a parent involvement specialist you heard about earlier, an after-school program paid for with a 21st Century grant. So, they have many resources to provide reading assistance. Going on, if we look at our next one on our list, if we're looking at... What am I looking at here? Mark Twain? At Mark Twain, we, again, Title I school, four SFA tutors, 21st Century after-school program. Could they use an interventionist position? Yes. But they are doing very well with the services they have in place at their school. Moving on with Fremont. Fremont was able to absorb one of their Read by Three tutors. They had two last year into Title I. The other one resigned. So, they have their positions in place. They have a parent involvement... So, they have... They will have three tutors, a parent involvement specialist. Where they could use some extra funds is within their after-school program, but it may be something that, if it's not funded tonight, Dr. Ward DeJoseph might want to go back and look at that, any other funds within that title budget that was within her prerogative to do. She's wanted to do some other things with that money, but she might want to go back and make a change if she feels that the after-school program is more important. She is doing a morning homework club with Title I. Moving on, as we go down with Fritsch. Fritsch probably has the least of all of those support services. They're not a Title I school. They don't have an after-school grant. Their tutors have been a really huge help for them. That may be a piece. That's probably the most gap if it was not refunded. There are people within those positions. I don't know if they've been absorbed into other positions. They have been. Okay, so those positions, they've all gone other places. So, we're actually not looking at... We would have to hire new people into those positions. And then finally, moving on to Seeliger. Even though they had tutors last year, as I think you heard before, they elected that they thought after-school program would be a better resource for them and they would rather go in that direction than bring back their tutors. So, if you were not to fund that tonight, they obviously wouldn't be able to do the after-school program, but, you know, they have... They are looking at what else they can do to support their kids. So, does that context help you in terms of where they're at?
Given what Mr. Walker said, you know, we've got people in place. We have reading programs in place, but these are kids that need additional help.
And they're getting a lot...
In the Title I schools, yeah. Fritsch, no. And maybe Seeliger, no.
Again, at Seeliger, they elected not to ask for tutors as a have-to-have in this round. They wanted after-school instead. That's that $25,000 item. That's what they asked for. Specifically did not ask for tutors and we've had that... Mrs. Kima had that specific conversation and she could elaborate if you like. And yes, Fritsch would love to have tutors back, but they would, if you guys... If you all decided to do that, you would have to rehire those positions because those people have gone on to other positions. And it would be a one-year-only because we would not be able to guarantee it, I would think, right, for the following years.
Yeah, and we've got... Okay, let me phrase this question a little differently. How many kids are at risk at Seeliger and Fritsch that are not reading a grade?
I would ask Nate to come up. I don't have the data from the last presentation. If you remember the last presentation, we had that data in the PowerPoint that we reviewed with you, the percentage of kids. I did not bring that.
I want to say he was about... He said it was about 20 students at each, across the district that were being tutored each day. Is that... Is that accurate? Why? Because I remember asking, "How many kids would not... How many kids are being tutored? How many kids are going to..."
Come on up. Thought I was going to get away with sitting back there. Every site is different depending on if they do one-on-one.
Just identify your... Tell us who you are.
For the record. If they're one-on-one or one-on-two, but most of them, you're looking around 40 to 60 kids are being tutored with four tutors on a daily basis. I could not tell you the exact numbers offhand. I do know that Fritsch had our lowest number of Read by Three students. They still have Read by Three and I believe they were around 40%. Oh, I was off. They were one of our lowest schools, though, and Seeliger was at 34.13. So, they still have a large chunk, not as large as some of our other schools that are Title I, that are still going to be receiving those funds.
And Valerie, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to remember and it's... I've been out of the little... The realm for a couple of years now. But of those kids at Seeliger and Fritsch who are qualified as McKinny-Vento, those kids are... They can attend the after-school programs at the other Title I schools.
They could. It's always difficult, you know, to move them after school to do that.
But we could find a way.
But we could actually certainly look at actually, within our McKinny-Vento program, providing services for them at their schools. And those are small numbers, too, true, but we could certainly look at doing that through our McKinny-Vento and our donation account that we have within that program. So, that was a great suggestion, Trustee Walker. So, yeah, we will... And again, we will have... There's more money coming out this fall. There's another consolidated grant coming out this fall that we will include Read by Three for the next biennium. So, we won't get the money right away, but we will be applying. So, there's... But we will be getting, if any of our schools stay in that turnaround status, which is Boarderwick, Empire, and Fremont, they'll be eligible for additional funding also coming forward. So, there are some other pots out there that may be coming forward in the near future. So, just keep that in mind.
Well, it sounds like, okay, we've gone through Bor... We've gone through the Title I schools. There are funds available and which can be... Will be used for the Read by Three program. It's in Fritsch. In Seeliger, we still have, according to Nate, a large number of kids in need. So, we could...
Yeah, by virtue of their performance, you have to remember that Fritsch is a four-star school. So, they don't qualify for a lot of these other programs that are out there. We've been really fortunate with Read by Three to be able to serve those two schools because of the way we developed our program. Most districts under Read by Three picked certain schools that they would serve with Read by Three. We elected to really look at the data and target specific populations at each school. And then at the schools like Fritsch and Seeliger where there wasn't other funding for tutors, we gave... We were able to provide them with funding for tutors, but we never did that at the title schools because they had funding already. So, we were able to really braid funding effectively to provide for them. But keeping in mind, they're always, because they're particularly with those two schools with their scores and where they are, and they don't have the high, you know, they don't have the high free and reduced rates, et cetera, they aren't... They're achieving at a different level as well as some of our other schools.
Something... Susan Kima, for the record, something else that we need to add that's in all schools as far as the funding, is our special education funding will support a lot of students with their reading in all the schools. And as Dr. Austin mentioned, with language acquisition and the support of our Title III funding and our grant funding associated with our ELs, which tends to be a number that we need to be looking at and watching in Read by Three, they, too, will also get specialized support in all schools.
And I think it's important to say at the elementary level, the whole day is a reading lesson. It doesn't matter what you're instructing your students on. In every subject, there is a reading lesson incorporated because that's just required. So, it's not just one little section.
That's a very good point. And as Mr. Brigham works with our TOSAs to develop the social studies measurable instructional units, that's all about reading. That will also be integrated throughout the day.
But the stats that Nate presented, not all kids are there, even though we have all these reading programs. But we heard from the paraprofessionals of what can be done to help these kids that are struggling. And I'm just one board member, but I'm, you know, I'm inclined then to say, "Okay, our Title I schools, we can probably get to the kids, but Fritsch and Seeliger, we ought to fund, out of the contingency fund." While we're waiting for our legal, you know, position to move forward, he... You know, Mike can't give us a time. It could be three months, could be six months, could be a year, or it could be tomorrow that they, you know, agreed to fund us. But if that were true, if whatever we decided on the contingency fund, that could be, in effect, reimbursed. It's not really going to work that way, but it'll be made whole. So, what would be the new numbers then for Fritsch and...
Be 115,000.
115,000.
116,000.
And I... Nate, and I'm concerned about Seeliger. We've got an after-school program for the principal. Is that going to get to the kids the same as if they had three tutors?
You can talk to Nate, but as I mentioned, worked with the principals and we went through their data, their data result... The results of their data, they had a higher success rate with their after-school programming. If we were to put tutors in there, I would have to go back through... There's some work that needs to be done there to lay the groundwork for more successful tutoring program, the after-school programs on it, and their data shows it.
I guess I have a question.
Could I... Can I ask just one, Claire? And I just... Valerie, the other thing is, and I asked this last time, and I just want to make sure, you know, if we're funding an after-school program at a non-Title school and tutors at a non-Title school, I want to make sure we're not supplanting because that's going to cause huge problems.
Yeah, I am a little concerned about that if we did it on anything other than a temporary basis, that we... And we were just having that sidebar conversation. I am real concerned about that. If you establish that and then you keep it in the general fund, then, yeah, you are supplanting because you're paying... There are other schools are paying for it with grant dollars. If you do it in the long term, I think if you did it in the short term, it could possibly be okay. I know when I asked for that ruling from the state that they felt like that was okay, but I think if you were to do it in the long term and establish it only at that school, the highest SES... The lowest SES school, the highest performing school, yeah, you would have some serious issues around supplanting, I think, down the road. I do. I think because we were braiding funding, that was all... Because it wasn't supplanting before because we were... It was really just the perfect situation. We're braiding funding across many projects with many different categorical fundings to provide what we needed at the school, which is still what we try to do all the time and fill in those gaps. But when we start making something permanent, then you guys are going to have to go back and look at those Title I schools. Because then you're not... You're spending more money per pupil at that school than you are at the others.
Okay. Makes sense. But this is short-term. This is... Well, let me go back. I feel that we're going to prevail legally and we'll somehow receive funding. But in the meantime, which is going to be short-term, these kids are going without and that's not acceptable. So, we'll leave it to the rest of the board.
Also, keeping in mind that if we're going to... If we do higher positions, as I'm sure Dr. Delphin will tell you, that it will take time to do that and to find people. And, you know, it may be that we don't find people right away when school starts. Just a...
If we do nothing, these kids are going without?
I'm just saying.
Zero. Yeah, I appreciate, no.
Start the first day of school.
I think all you guys, you do great work. No, I mean, we're all in this together. And it's...
Just a couple of thoughts. One, if it's 116,000 instead of 325, is there a fund other than contingency that we could make a transfer from? And so, think about that. And then, the next thought is, we received the grant funding so late last year that these students didn't get the tutoring until almost November, which it's so hard because they're elementary kids and you totally see the benefit of that. But if we pursue, I think there... From the information that we've received, it appears that there was an error in the grading and the final determination of the grant process. And so, I would like to see that pursued. And so I, I would like to see that pursued so that we don't have errors. If there's no way to address, what, what, from the information that we have, it appears to be a clear error. Um, if, if that's, if we don't have a way to address that and it happens again, we can't keep using contingency funds. So we have to do something. So I, there's a part of me that says, okay, let, let's just wait a little bit and, and let our legal counsel, let our superintendent pursue that avenue a little further to see if they can't secure funding for this from, from where it should be coming from.
And on that same level, I think that before we obligate those funds from the general fund, that we really work with the grants department, because if we get into a supplanting situation and we lose Title I funding, we're going to have a whole world of problems as a board. So, I mean, we want to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. As a former Title I person, I'm just saying, we don't want to go down that road.
So an example that we have in the district is that the goal was to, um, when I first became, um, when I first, um, got into my position, we had Success For All in our title schools, our three title schools at that time. Then we brought on Fremont as a fourth title school. Then the goal was to have a consistent reading program around the district. And while the board was preparing for that budget, we as a district, as a general fund, supported Success For All at Fritsch while the four schools were paying for it out of their title funds. That was okay because we weren't doing it. We weren't paying for the program out of the general fund at Seeliger. We still had a school out there, so it wasn't district-wide. But the minute that we paid for Success For All at Seeliger, we were required to pay for the program in the four title schools. So you have to be very, um, that's an example. Again, the board had time to prepare, to be able to afford to pay for Success For All in all the other schools, because that was a big budget change at that time.
So kind of to piggyback on Laurel's first question, because we all have our own personal budgets and, but they're budgets. So if I go over in my, like, my entertainment thing, but I didn't eat as much as I thought I would, does that, you know, you have a negative number in one of your, your items, but in then, in this other item, I have a plus. So is, is there a way, I mean?
Sure. So in terms of that question, I mean, yeah, the, the funds, you can make budget transfers ultimately. If you, if there's under expenditures in one area, you can move that money, that budget authority to other areas. Um, as far as kind of a dedicated amount of money that's there without known purpose at this time, but is, is there for the board to do something with if they so choose, it really is that contingency fund? That, that's the only part of the budget that you have approved where it's not obligated somewhere else at this point. I don't know if that...
But if we spent that hundred and fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand dollars without, you know what I'm saying? We end up in that fund. What if that fund, that item, that line item or whatever we're doing, ends up having a surplus of one twenty? And because we didn't hire this teacher, we didn't fill that position, or those kind of things, would it equal out? I mean, then we wouldn't have to do anything with the contingency.
It, it's possible. Ultimately, I, I think what's important to remember is that when you're talking about using the contingency fund, it's just the general fund. It's, it's just a part of the general fund. Okay? So if, if that happens, that certainly, that there's money that has been freed up because it wasn't spent in one area. It, in effect, it's the same thing as using some of those contingency dollars. It, it's just, um, I'm losing my train of thought how to explain it, but I, I, again, it's just, I...
A lot of thoughts.
Yeah, right. Um, but it, but it really is, it's all the same thing. It, it's all within that general fund. It's just by accessing that contingency, it's, you're really, it's that money that you really, you set aside for in case. Um, and you've, but you really didn't have an intention of spending it at that time and you're making it so that you can access that money. It still may happen that you have some vacancies that free up some money and then could ultimately cover that. Um, but we're really not going to know that. I mean, when we come to the amended budget in, in December, we'll have a really good idea of what that looks like. At this point, because the school year hasn't started, we just, we don't know.
Okay, well, I thought, we got, we got two things. We're going to proceed legally with the Department of Ed and my resolve all of this. In the meantime, we're up against the clock for the, and I say this, we've all seen it, and Ryan, you mentioned this before, if, if the kids can't read, they're not going to be successful. And, and all the statistics are, if you don't read or, or you're not reading by, by grade three, and I'm saying not grade, not perfect, but you, you're not reading, your, your chances of success in life are severely diminished. They're not thrown away, but it's, we're playing catch-up. We have the opportunity to do both. We can pursue legally and hopefully this is going to be resolved. But in the meantime, we have the money in the general fund and for me to take care of these kids that are struggling. And we do it at an early age rather than, um, you know, play catch-up, or try to play catch-up going on. If we don't, then we just keep repeating the same, the same cycle. Our Learner Center model says, get to the kids early and often. We do that with the learning guides. And reading is essential, or they're not going anywhere. I say we go with a hundred and, what, a hundred and five, a hundred and fifteen thousand, but in the meantime, do, do two things, um, going forward.
One more question. Valerie's up there, so. I was going to ask Valerie anyway.
I, I just wanted to say that if you decided to, to, for example, to fund those tutors at Fritsch, you would have to do it for, in order to not be a supplanting issue, you would have to be a temporary, you would have to get rid of those positions at the end of the year. And if we don't, or if we're not successful in finding another categorical funding source, we, we could not rehire them in the general fund, because at that point, we would get into a supplanting issue. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody.
Is that only, sorry, is, is that only if we focus on those two? I'm a little confused about the legality of this as a supplanting.
Because SFA tutors in particular are in all the title grants at the four schools. So that particular position is a supplanting issue because it has been, it has never been covered in the general fund ever at Fritsch and Seeliger. And to put it in there now and put it in there, and then it becomes down the road permanent, then we, then we have an issue that Trustee Walker talked about in putting Title I funds in jeopardy. So we just have to, that has to be really clear and that we, those would be only for the remainder of this year, and they would have to go away at that point and come out of another categorical source down the road, unless we wanted to fund all the SFA tutors at all the schools out of the general fund.
I believe we're going to, we're going to prevail legally, but in the meantime, we're just buying time, or it's not a long-term.
But if we don't prevail and if we don't find the other money, then we are going to have to be back here again saying these people are not going to be keeping their jobs. I just want to make sure that that's really clear, unless we do the, unless we do a general fund for everyone or we find another categorical.
Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to be clear, too. The authorizing the use of contingency is not a one-time shot. So i- if the decision would be tonight to authorize the one hundred and fifteen thousand, there's still the other eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars left that the board can access another time. So I just, just so you're aware of that, it's not a one-time shot and you, you can't use, you know, if you would decide to go back again at a future board meeting, that is an option here.
I, um, I'm with President Swirzick here still, that I don't think it's precedent-setting because I think this is an extraordinary circumstance, as we mentioned, that, that this just happened to fall outside the budget. I think that, um, knowing the, the parameters and plan in place for it, um, we could maneuver through, I trust our staff and the guidance they give us to ensure that we didn't fall into supplanting. Um, and it, it, we, our, our best, our best case, the, the students was thirty-six percent insufficient reading below, or, you know, below where they should be. That's still terrible. And then as soon as we get S-BAC scores, we're going to sit up here and bang our fists. When I, when I go around and I sit with our teachers and staff and ask them what they need, they tell me what they need, that list right there is them saying, this is what we need. We, we ask them, okay, you can't have all this other stuff, would, tell us what you need. That's what they're saying they need. Um, I, I sit on the, obviously, I think we're all, we got to pursue the legal route, but I think we got to give them what they need if we have the ability to do it, and I believe we do. So, um, I'd encourage you to, to, um, listen to our people. That's, that's what they're saying.
And I'm not saying we're not listening to the people. I think it's kind of like the timing. I think, I'd like to see another two weeks go by so that staff can actually look, if we're going to break this up, so staff can actually look at these figures and figure out what the consequences might be or whatever. And I, I don't think the decision has to be made tonight. I think there's other decisions that have to be made tonight, but I don't think this is one of them. I don't think not putting this, putting this off for another two weeks is not going to lose us a spectacular candidate. So I, now that we, we're not going with the original thing that we were thinking and we're now going after schools that are not titled, I'd like to just, I feel like we're being hurried into doing that and we might find out in two weeks that we've just totally screwed up our Title I funding. And I'm not saying they don't know right now, but I think I would like to give staff enough time to see if that's actually, you know, what's going to happen, if, what the consequences would be. And I would like that, another two weeks. I don't think waiting until the next meeting to make that motion for a hundred and sixteen is going to make much of a difference.
I agree. I think that we're pretty good, we are, we've, I've already asked for some guidance from Department of Ed on the supplanting issue, and I feel like if we did something temporarily, that we are in good shape there, but it really, but I just want to, you know, caution you that it has to be temporary. It can continue on to next year. It just can't, whether we have the money or not, we would have to have the money for all of, and particularly with the tutors, we'd have to have the money for all the tutors to keep them in the general fund.
And we're talking about the short-term.
I feel pretty comfortable with this plan because we asked this question before we came to you with this list. But we just need to, um, when we're focusing on only, when we, in the beginning, we were, we were looking at all the schools. Now we're focusing on the two schools that happen to not be Title I schools. So we have to be just a little bit more careful.
Right. And, and this is what happened with NIAA when we were doing the realignment. The realignment committee came up with the five A. And then at the, at the meeting where we're supposed to approve the five A, the principals from Las Vegas came in and said, oh, no, 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 this is the way we have to have it. And they decided that's the way where they were going to do it, after a committee had already spent a year and a half. And now, after that meeting and adopting that plan, we've had to deal with more and more appeals from other schools because of the consequences of that. And we had to make that decision that meeting, instead of if we could have waited until the next meeting, those could have been ironed out. And that's just what I'm saying. There's just a lot of, now that we've changed the plan, I just want a little bit more time for everybody to be able to absorb it.
Yeah, we're in a much better position if we were to fund all of those things from a supplanting issue as opposed to focusing only on Fritsch and Seeliger.
I just want to make, I'm still in line with doing this. I just want that to be clear. I, I, I mean, the step-down approach is fine. I'm good with wait, waiting never hurts to make a financial decision. It really doesn't. Um, but I'm still in line with, this is what we asked them what they need and that's what they said they needed, so.
Yeah, and, and I, I think everyone agrees that we need more for kids. The kids need more. There needs to be more consistent funding in the state to, to pay for this and, and to cover this. And, but I think what we're, we're looking at and what we're being, we're seeing is, we don't have the money. This, this was grant money that we didn't get. Now we're looking at going into the contingency fund, and I think we need to listen to our superintendent, who says, when we lose the next grant fund and the next wave of people come in, is it the social workers? Is it, is it, is it jumpstart? Is it, is it something else? Pre-K? Is, what is it that we, how, how do we do it? So I, I'm okay with not making the transfer right now because we don't, I, we, I, I, I would be okay with, with having them continue to pursue securing funding from the state for this and, 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 and I, and it kills me, it kills me to say that, because I know that those are kids that are getting a support, but I, I just...
Let's go this way, okay. And Laurel, okay, and Stacy, all right, we can, we can defer making any decision on the contingency fund tonight, um, you know, until the next meeting. It's not going away. Um, because at some point, I will call for a vote on who's going to stand with these kids and who's not. And I, I'm that for you, right?
No, 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 that's not fair, and you know that. That's...
I thought you liked that. Anyway, but it is, it's, it's serious, you know, going forward. It is temporary. We're not doing anything long-term. We're doing something temporary for the kids. But we can wait. I mean, it's not, we don't have to make that decision tonight, and maybe we'll know more from our legal counsel. Joe?
I just want to make a clarification, because it's come up a couple of times. I get the idea, or I get the premise that, you know, we're unsuccessful at a grant, we decide to roll money into this to cover this because we're unsuccessful, what happens with the next failure? But this isn't just, hey, we applied for a grant and we lost it. This was, this has a lot of concerns and questions associated with it. This isn't your normal loss. And so this, you know, every grant that comes to us, hopefully we win them all. But if we don't, some are just going to be, hey, we didn't have the best application, therefore we didn't get the grant, and that is what it is.
But we have the best application.
And that's my point here, is we have, this is an unusual circumstance.
And that's why you're sitting right here.
One more thing, if, if, if we do end up putting this off for another meeting, ninety isn't that far from eighty, and there's three eighties up there other than the one that was scratched. But I mean, in, in reality, if it, I don't, this is where you guys are geniuses, but if there is a way to, to just make all of them have SFA tutors, um, then maybe that's how we do it. I know, I understand, I don't want to override Seeliger because they, I think probably the success of the after-school program has more to do with the students reading for a longer amount of time in the day, uh, instead of the focus part, I would guess. But, um, either way, I don't know how you guys worked that, but it isn't that far from, from those, if that's, if that's what they need.
Okay, Laurel, would you like to make a motion then? Uh, you know, just given all the stuff, the legally that we've got to...
And I have to wear my glasses now, this is terrible. In light of the fact that there appears to have been irregularities in the administration of the Read by Three Phase Four Grant Application Process, and given that the superintendent and legal counsel are in communication with the State of Nevada and the State Department of Education with respect to the matter, I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the superintendent's recommendation that money from the contingency fund not be used to maintain a portion of the staffing and program costs for the district's Read by Grade Three program for the 2018, 2019 school year, and that we authorize the superintendent and the legal counsel to proceed with their efforts to secure funding for the district's program from the state.
Second.
Okay, discussion. The part that you read in there, not use any money from the contingency fund, that would be okay for tonight, but it's not next week.
Right, you can change it next week.
No, I mean, we, what we're doing is, what you're saying is, we're going to make, wait to make a decision, but you made a decision by what you just read there, by not using the contingency fund. Maybe we ought to take that out of the, of the, I would suggest we just take that out of the motion.
Well, I, I would just say that you could make a motion, if this, if we bring this matter before us again, you could make a motion to use it. It just, for tonight, we're not using it. It doesn't, we put, there's no timeframe in that motion on when we don't do it. So any motion could be made in another meeting as long as it's agendized.
What do you think about that, Mr. Pavlakas?
Yeah, I think that you, either the maker of the motion could add a, a provision to the motion that says that this is without prejudice to renew, or to... to the motion that says that this is without prejudice to renew, or to reconsider funding from contingency funds. I, I think that would address your concern, Trustee Swirzick. But I also agree with Trustee Crossman, that a new motion can be made at any meeting.
Then, what's the use of the motion? It's just, it's buying us time, but we're not really, it's, we're not really.
It's to put on the record that this is how we feel, as a board.
And, and, and to, yeah, to.
You could just say, with your motion, include what Mr. Pavlakas said about.
I have no problem with that.
Without prejudice, okay.
As long as Renee has it.
Okay. Renee, do you, can you pick? You, okay. You can pick that up from, my, gotcha, okay.
I hear Mr. Swirzick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, before we call for the, for the motion, is there any comments from the, from the audience, from the public?
We put them to sleep?
No. Okay.
Come on, Laurel.
Laura Austin, I just wanted to say that the changing nature of our demographics in the district, that Seliger actually has more English learners the last couple of years than Borderwick, in numbers-wise. It has, it hovers around 100, and Borderwick hovers around 75. And I know we're not simply talking about English learners, but it just, you know, it's, we label schools, we label kids, I mean, I know that's, that's kinda the nature of things. We, we are categorical, as, as Mr. Stokes was mentioning, and none of that really works in children's favor. But I just wanted to raise that point, that I really appreciate looking at Fritsch and Seliger with fresh eyes, because I think there's been some changes over time that were, we kinda snuck up on us a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, we have, no comments from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
Oppose.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I could just add, I'll continue to keep the board updated on information that I received from the department, and also from the State of Nevada, and I'll work with you to bring this back at your request.
Okay. Jose, the request for the, you know, assuming we go through with this at, at some point, for a teacher interventionist, for the tutors, tutors would probably be the par professionals, how much time do you need to get geared up so that we're? To be honest, it'd be now.
Probably no later next meeting. Okay. We'll work, get it on the agenda next, for the next meeting.
Agenda item number 11, informational update on staffing of the, this is great, for the 2018-19 school year, including report of the district's efforts to fill a vacant teaching positions with substitute teachers for discussion only.
Thank you, President Swirzick, trustees. Jose Delphin, for the record, not a very sizzling topic here, but just so you know, we have been pretty busy. And, you know, from January till now, we've hired over 70 people. So we have had many ceremonies with retirees, and people that have left the district, you might have attended some going-away parties for folks. So because of various reasons, we have hired 82, roughly a little over 82 people thus far. We still need a bunch of folks, and I did a little breakdown for you, for you from last week's numbers. Now, they haven't changed very much since last week, when I put this together. It's plus or minus here and there, but they're, they're pretty much what I laid out for you. We, we do have four special education teachers that I'm still looking for, roughly about 10 elementary, and about four secondary, so that went up by one. And I wanna tell you that, you know, behind the scenes, I work with our principals and our staff, with Sierra Nevada College UNR, with various leads that I get from our own people. And I have principals that text me and call me at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, and we had conversations about what we have for Plan B, C, and D. Where are our long-term subs gonna happen if we don't get this teacher or this parapro? So every, every person listed on here is important, and I don't wanna diminish that. But I can tell you, I've got principals who are calling me on their camping vacations, still worried about, you know, staffing at every level, and I take their calls. Joe knows I'm up at night, so I'm, I'm working with them. So we are busily trying to fill all these vacancies. The person I'm getting to know from UNR is new, Dr. Sedgwick, who was in charge of all the student teachers, retired. And so there's a new person I'm meeting with on Monday at UNR. I've been working with Sierra Nevada College for a long time, so working with almost Dr. Kelly Brown, she's just about done with her doctorate, has been great. So we've got a bunch of alternative routes to licensure, folks coming through the pipeline. We do have some stellar long-term subs that wanna continue doing that for next year. I do wanna come before you, probably in the next couple of sessions, to look at hard-to-fill, not just for teaching, but for instance, a nurse would be great to put on the hard-to-fill list. I wanna put bus drivers back on that list. Those are also hard-to-fill. So that's what I have for this part of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
You know, one of the things, like you said, you have some subs that wanna do it again. So, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard from a number of teachers, and primarily at Seliger, is there's this generation of students who have had substitute teachers one, two, three, four years in a row. And so, I mean, that can't be. So I mean, if, if child A is in a class without a licensed teacher, year two as a district, we need to have a way to make sure that they are in a highly qualified teacher's classroom that next year, because, you know, I know I'm preaching the choir, but three years of ineffective instruction, which we don't know, a substitute teacher doesn't have all of the credentialing. So we need to make sure that we're putting these kids with qualified teachers, and we can't just send them from sub to sub to sub. We just can't do that.
I agree. The choir agrees.
So, I guess my question is, is there a policy or a procedure that we could put together, and I'm kinda looking at you, Mr. Stokes, to ensure that that happens, that we don't have children that are just going from substitute teacher's classroom to substitute teacher's classroom? Because I think a little effort needs to be put into place to get them quality instruction.
Trustee Walker, this is certainly a, a condition of the times. So to answer your question, we do not have policy or regulation that deals with that. We've, we've never had this problem in the past. So it would be something that we'd have to try and, and address if we wanted to put policy or regulation toward this end.
So we were doing swimmingly well up until about June 5th. I had just about every position hired, actually. I had only one sped vacancy on, about, about a month ago. I was looking pretty cocky, to be honest. But now, it's, it's a different story. We've got folks that have left due to marital situations, you know, whatever living conditions they have with their spouses, wives, partners, what have you, that are out of my control or your control. There's always that natural ebb and flow between our surrounding districts. I have scooped a bunch of really great Washoe people, but Washoe has scooped some of our people, Lying County, back and forth. So this is, this is the toughest part of the year for me, is this summer, because of all the different variations of where people think the grass is greener. I can tell you that most of those folks who go to other districts usually come back to us after they've tested it out somewhere else. But, you know, we're, we haven't stopped trying, so I, I don't want you to think that, you know, none of us have given up in making sure that we have a qualified, and let me just say, the new term is talent, whether that's a talented bus driver or a talented teacher, that we have the best talent in our, in our classrooms, in our buildings. Whether that's Mr. Hicks as our new elementary director, or whether it's our new bus driver from wherever they may come from. So we need talent.
So, Mr. Delphin, what exact positions are we looking at that are gonna need to be filled with substitute teachers?
I would say, if I were to take a guess, it would be special education for sure. They're not growing out there. I thought, I, like I said, looking pretty at the end of the school year. I wanna say probably a couple elementary. But still, I'm working with not just Sierra Nevada College, but also with I Teach, which is another ARAL program. And I'm, I'm looking at other, like WGU, and looking at student teachers who are maybe looking for full-time work while they're student teaching. So that's why I'm, I don't wanna give it up too loudly as I'm on TV, because I, I have some secrets up my sleeve, and if, if I do it in public, I'll get stolen. But I do have some sources where I can find some qualified folks that are out there. And, you know, I don't want Lying County to steal, or Washoe, or.
Yeah, that's, well, how many instructional coaches are there in the district?
You know, I don't have that total, I can get that for you. I wanna say, Mrs. Kima, easily a couple dozen? From elementary to secondary?
About 20.
So we have a little play if we get in an emergency situation.
We, we.
Some are paid for out of specific grant funds, and if they're not used for that purpose, then we would be in violation of the grant. So not all of them could be used.
Right, but if we change their classification, so they became a classroom teacher, as opposed to an instructional coach, and they were paid out of the general fund, that would solve that issue.
Right, and then we'd give the grant money back.
So special ed's still the hard-to-get, I mean, is, we still have that, for, is it a two-year cycle that we approved for that?
Yes.
And that's why there's like an old retiree on our paperwork?
I have this too.
Yeah.
We do have, right now, I can think of four people that are in critical rehires coming back to us. Couple in sped, one in science, I wouldn't say. So any other questions on this? Cuz I don't wanna give you any misinformation here.
I'll, I'll talk about some of the stats.
Oh, yeah. So the stats from four years are pretty eye-opening, so I ran this for you guys, cuz I usually only do it for a year at a time. So the four-year look-back gets you to about 10,000 applications. And just, just to give you an idea of the tremendous amount of work that three of my staff do, I have three full-time staff that analyze each application. An application is pretty long. You're looking at easily 10 to 20 pages worth of information. So looking at each app and making sure that they're, you know, valid or not valid is, is really key to our success. And you can see where the spikes are when the big hiring really happens, which is easily from spring into July, which is where we are now, in, in getting those applications submitted. So I'm still hopeful that we get a bunch of people coming through. We still get applications every day. So that's part of that schema right there. And then the ethnicity, race, and gender, these are canned reports. I can't customize them. They come out of the people software as-is. And these demographics that you see, ethnicity, race, and gender, they're self-reported. They, as you can tell, a lot of them don't respond to what kind of ethnicity they come from, or race, or gender. They prefer not to answer that. But some do, some don't. And then you can see your next bar graph there of top education levels. Interesting there, we had some MDs and some doctor, some medical doctors and some lawyers apply, a bunch of them. And then the top undergrad, you know, I, I did ask the company, I called them directly, I said, what is this other? Cuz there's 4,754, if I can even see that anymore. And that's basically, what they told me was, it's an amalgamation of every other university that's not listed on the diagonal there. So it's, it's miscellaneous. It doesn't give me a breakdown.
Well, let's just go to your last one. Top graduate colleges. When does WNC offer a graduate degree? Or Truckee Meadows? Or even on your graph, you've got other, then you've got University of Nevada, Reno, you've got, something's missing here, so it's, it's something else. What is this?
So, yeah, I think you're right, too, that some, some of this data is a little skewed, and it depends really on how the applicants put in their data. So in the online application, if you say, what's your highest level? You say, doctorate. Where'd you get it from? Well, I got it from WNC. Was that an error? Probably. So it's the input that is given by the applicant. Obviously, there's not a graduate-level course at WNC, so that's typically what we're getting from this data. So it's, you, you're dead on. It's not, it's not.
But doesn't the data also show classified and certified employees? So if we have more classified applicants, they might have WNC, even if they don't have that. So you, this intermingles classified and certified employee applications.
It does say undergraduate.
Yeah, but it's a top grad, top graduate college, no matter if you're classified.
Yeah.
You know, you get a, you get a PhD from WNC, Truckee Meadows.
From WNC that wasn't undergrad.
Yep. It's, it's all in how the data is inputted, so.
So we'll take this for what it is.
It does have some errors.
Okay. Dr. Delphin, just generally speaking, we get a lot of applications, obviously, we don't, you know, we, we don't follow through, I mean, we don't hire everybody that sends in an application. What, what are the biggest causes for denial? I mean, is it just, is it simply lack of qualifications, or what other factors? And I'm kinda thinking out loud, not for my knowledge, of course, but also people that, you know, are trying to apply to this district, what are they missing?
Most of the ones that are rejected are incomplete. Them filled out an actual high school diploma, or if they have a bachelor's degree, that they didn't submit their transcripts. Cuz a lot of where they're put on the pay scale, if you're a teacher, by and large, is transcript-driven. So if, if, and, and that's where we, we also work with people after we hire them, is they think they have more credits, for instance, and we say, well, great, bring in what you have. If you didn't upload them in the online application, we will adjust your salary accordingly. So even if those errors happen after hire, we, we adjust. And then we mostly, you know, if, if we get it caught in time, we will retroactively, you know, pay them. But the, the biggest errors are people just not completing them, or, and I've gotta tell you honestly, they don't have great. tell you honestly, they don't have great references. You know, some of these confidential references that don't hire them, please. Or they've admitted to, you know, their eight DUIs in the last eight years. Probably not a good hire. After we hire them, some don't pass a paratest. Some fail the drug test for various reasons. We've had people that we've hired, and then a week later, they're gone. We had two of those happen this summer. We hired them straight away, got them through, all the way up to insurance to get them into the system, and then for love or whatever reason, they had to leave. And it's usually a family issue. Somebody's taking care of an elderly parent, or somebody fell in love, and their spouse or partner is infouled, and, you know, I can't compete with that. Life happens, folks. Yep.
Additional questions, comments?
I do have a couple of maybe exciting things that are, let me see if I can break this up real quick. Sorry, Mr. Swirzick, I know you were trying to get me off the stand here. So I found an article with regard to attracting more talent, and we're not the only ones. Elon Musk is looking for great talent. So what he's looking for is attracting talent through having pet-friendly offices, bring your pets to work, catered lunches. That's what we can use our contingency funds on. Massages for the staff, organic spa, pet insurance, free shuttle to and from work, receiving discounts on company products. Yeah, I'd like to see a Tesla discount.
It sounds like we need Google to be one of our partners.
Online, onsite wellness center. I do have possible good news for that in the future. Just a lot of interesting things that even the top companies who are making billions of dollars are having a hard time finding really great talent. And as you've probably heard in the news, Google's building their own apartment complexes in Silicon Valley, because folk, folks cannot afford the rent or the housing in that part of the country anymore. So we're, we're not the only ones facing a talent deficit, if you will. A lot of companies are. Joe, if we can build affordable housing here in Carson City, I think I pitched that to you once, tiny homes, I'm ready. I'll, I'll get a hammer.
Motion to second, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Tonight, 13 informational items for discussion only. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Request for future agenda topics. Joe?
I think I just wanted to, if you will, second what trustee Walker said. I would like to put that, you know, a policy discussion in one of the future meetings about this issue of students being taught by subs for consecutive years. You know, where I'm going with it is if, to the best of our ability, to discourage consecutive years in a substitute classroom.
So, I mean, I guess this isn't really an agenda item, I guess. I just want to say that I felt bad that, and Sierra came two weeks, two meetings in a row, and we didn't hear her item, which was largely the reason I wanted us to hear it. So I just want to apologize on behalf of her coming in for the meeting at night, and us two times in a row kind of shuttling her off, so...
She's going to think we don't like it.
Yeah.
Last week, she had multiple on the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I mean, you know, when you prepare...
Yeah. I want to make sure that, so I voted because of the language to authorize for them to pursue the legal part. I just want to get it on the record of asking for a future agenda topic, and I think we're on the same page there, that, that we bring up that discussion again for, for the Read by Grade Three stuff.
Absolutely. It'll be on next, the next agenda.
And, and then I have, I finally went through the 100 bills that I had to go through for NASB. So if you guys can look at some of the comments and see if we actually made policy changes and so, because we're going to get asked by the, you know, we do this every year, but I finally got it through the pages with, because it's nine o'clock and I can't talk after nine. But I have paperwork for you guys so that we can put that on the agenda and go through it, so that it's on the record.
Additional agenda, agenda items? Seeing none. Without objection, we are adjourned.